Good evening. I'd like to call to order. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this rescheduled meeting of the Urbana City Council. This meeting would have occurred on December 25th, which of course was Christmas Day. So this meeting is rescheduled to today. It's a city council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting of October 23rd, 2023. Is there a motion for approval?
They're moved.
They're second?
Second.
Seconded by Jaya. Any substantial corrections? Shandra?
Yes, I believe I was in attendance of this meeting and it's not listed on the minutes.
In attendance?
Yes.
Was that electronically or in person? In person, okay. We'll get that corrected. Okay, any other corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Additions to the agenda. I would like to add the opportunity to read a letter of condolence on the passing of Mr. Jim Hayes and during presentations and public input. That's okay. Okay, I'll start with the letter of condolence in the memory of Mr. James Henry Hayes Jr. This was read at, I read this at his funeral service on Saturday at Bethel AME Church. "To the family of Mr. James Henry Hayes Jr. On behalf of the City of Urbana, I share our sincere condolences on the passing of Mr. James Henry Hayes Jr. In addition to distinguished service to his country and the United States Air Force and his career as an educator in the Champagne Unit 4 School District, Mr. Hayes represented Ward III on the Urbana City Council from 1995 to 2003. He was known for his steady and pragmatic approach to challenges and issues. He sought compromise when possible, but never hesitated to make difficult decisions when necessary. His city council colleague Esther Pat observed the following. Quote, "Jim Hayes was a diligent council member who rarely ever missed a meeting in 12 years. He was very engaged with the people in Ward III and frequently attended meetings of the Urbana Police Department Advisory Committee and the United Citizens and Neighbors and any other neighborhood gathering to which he was invited. Jim served as the city council's representative to the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission for four years and to the Champagne County Economic Development Corporation Board for four years. He was approachable and responsive to people throughout Urbana. He enjoyed, and most certainly earned, the respect of many people who did business with city government. Jim also led the city council in singing 'Happy Birthday' at the meeting closest to the birthdays of each council member and the mayor. Everyone loved it because he sang so well." Former Mayor Todd Satterthwaite shared these thoughts. "Jim was attentive to the needs and opinions of his constituents. When Police Chief Eddie Adair started up a community policing program in Ward III, it was important to get feedback from the neighbors. The advisory group met monthly at the King School Library and Jim was always there to hear the concerns and opinions of the residents of his ward. Jim always made sure there was good follow-up after the meetings. He helped to make sure that residents felt empowered about contributing to the well-being and destiny of their own neighborhood. He supported building affordable housing. The partnerships with organizations like Habitat for Humanity were important to him. He represented his ward well for 12 years." Mr. Hayes' public service extended countywide. He served on the Champagne County Mental Health Board from 1974 to 1977 and the Champagne County Sheriff's Merit Commission from 1990 to 2002. He was an advocate for housing, social and racial justice, and neighborhood safety. He shared his time and talent with the Corral, the Martin Luther King Choir, the Douglas Community Center, and Bethel AME Church in Champagne, Illinois. His dedication to our community is memorialized in the James Henry Hayes Jr. Apartment Homes located across the street from City Hall. Jim Hayes sang well and lived well. We are profoundly grateful for his leadership, service, and friendship. He passed away on December 20th, 2023." Okay, we'll move on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step forward and state your name for the record and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Okay. Is this on? Danielle Cunningham Township Supervisor. I also serve on the exact committee of the Continuum of Service Providers for the Homeless. I have a voice tremor, which is worse today for some reason. I do want to say Jim Hayes was a lovely human being I served with on city council. He was a sweet and kind and loving man. And he always gave me lovely hugs as we saw each other, so I will miss him greatly. I want to speak in support of Hope Village as it will provide our friends and neighbors who have fallen on hard times safe, supportive, and secure homes, permanent homes. Housing is healthcare and the first step to greater hope and wellness. So please ask you to vote yes today without conditions. I do also want to share other things that I didn't get to the last time I was giving public input. I wanted to say I've long argued that the city needs to invest in the Bradley Avenue corridor and should absolutely address neighborhood requests for better infrastructure, lightning streets, sidewalks, and other needs. Please follow a yes vote for Hope with ensuring CBG, whatever, CDBG funding supplements and does not replace general fund investment in this area. That's a big piece of making sure that works. And I want to lastly just speak to the Carver Drive versus Federal Drive. I had spoken about it as being discriminatory. I want to speak about how it threatens funding for this program. If you look at the union project that was proposed with 130 some odd units at a place that actually will only have 30 units, they were also seeking IDA funding at the time. And one of the concerns they had was the access from Federal Drive in the plan. And I believe that IDA will consider requiring backdoor access through an industrial area to be discriminatory. And I think it could significantly threaten the ability for this project to bring millions of dollars to our community. I've spoken about delays in emergency response. I want to be clear that if you look at MTD and I looked up MTD's plant, excuse me, their routes, the MTD bus comes to Carver and Bradley at Rowmont, so it's right there, very close to Hope. But it's otherwise more of a 10-block walk to get to it from a different location. So having access through Carver will be important for MTD access. I drove Federal Drive recently. It's very dark, it's full of trucks and buses, it's missing sidewalks. And I consider it bad planning that where planning really calls for compact and contiguous development. I pledge as Cunningham Township Supervisor, who will be referring people to this program, to refer appropriately to the program so that the program is not a disturbance to the neighbors. The people that I know and I work with on a daily basis that we will be referring to this program are chronically homeless folks who are primarily hermits. They have very fragile medical conditions. They do take the bus because they have to, but it's very hard for them to move and walk and get out. Most of the folks I work with are very sweet and kind and are just basically looking for a place that they can die peacefully. I spoke with one gentleman who's staying at Straw, who I think would be a good candidate, who has terminal cancer. And he grabbed me as I was walking out the door and he just said, "Hey, I just want, I just want to thank you for your office working with me to get housing. I know I'm gonna die, I know I have cancer, I've accepted God's fate in this, but I would just love to have a place that is safe for me to be, that is not in the middle of a bunch of people and the kind of chaos of a congregate setting." And he represents one of the folks that we would be, you know, the type of cases that we'd be referring to Hope Village. So I absolutely do not, just as we have with family housing, we've had very few problems with family housing placing that in the neighborhood with a lot of other folks. And I absolutely want to be responsive as Cunningham Township Supervisor to the concerns of the neighbors. That's why I've asked Hope Village to have 24/7 phone call access. So if there is any concern, someone loses their way, the neighbors can call and they can access. And they could also call our office and we would get services to those folks. So I just want to assure the neighborhood, you will not be abandoned in this process. We are here to work together as a community. Thank you.
My name is Audra Owens and first I would like to submit this letter to be put into the record. So... To the Urbana City Council members from the Carver Park and Dr. Ellis residence. The members of the two African-American subdivisions, after first understanding, and please let me stress that, understanding the objective of the Hope Village development, embarked upon a campaign to express their concerns to the governing body of Champagne and Urbana. The information compiled by the two subdivisions included petition letters and documents conveying their concerns over having access to the proposed Hope Village subdivision through the historical Carver Park neighborhood. Over the months of work and meetings with the Urbana City Council, we concluded that the information we provided was not utilized. Let me stress that one again. The information provided by the two groups was not utilized to improve the circumstances of Carver Park. Subsequently, the plan moved forward without the suggested changes by the Planning Commission, thus making our contribution invalid. The term "legal oppression" was derived from a Jim Crow law exercised prior to 1968. Unfortunately, this law was outlawed by the federal and state governments of this country. And we believe that we are now, we were, and now and as we progress, are subject to this antiquated process and request your assistance by voting no to the existing plans. The existing plans, we are looking for updates. So the existing plans for Hope Village that has had no modification since its inception. We expect the city council of Urbana to exercise their fiduciary responsibility to uphold the values and expectations of your constituents and encourage your sister city Champagne, which is complicit in this development, so as not to put the entire project in jeopardy. By voting yes to this existing plan with no changes, we believe you would be relinquishing your fiduciary responsibilities to a non-elected official.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, speak into the mic, please.
Yeah, my name is Julie Watkins. I'm from Urbana and thank you for listening. I'm nervous in a room with so many people, so please bear with me. I'm going to be leaving, but I'll go back home to livestream and listen to what everybody says. I'm here because so much of last meeting upset me. People were talking past each other, not hearing what others said. Maybe people didn't say what other people thought they said. This is hard. Don't use the word bigotry without telling your proof. Some people countered objections with counterexamples and didn't use that loaded word. I didn't hear "it's the B-word because," and fill in the blank. If you don't fill in a blank with reasons, that's kind of like cherry picking. It's bigotry to say ABC and saying XYZ is the same as saying ABC. Well, if that's what you think, please say it. Maybe somebody else said ABC in an earlier meeting, but talked it out and changed their mind. Maybe they said EFG, not XYZ. I think it's cherry picking to talk about discrimination against the homeless and not address the barriers that seem to be inherent in Urbana's public engagement process. That's evident from descriptions of previous meetings and official replies that I've listened to. A procedure may look fair on paper, but in practice can be gamed. It seems it was. Some people have agendas rather than being good neighbors. Let's take a counterexample, the Savannah Green Alley problem. We got a report in September last year. After a bid that came in that was too high, there was collaboration between public works staff, a contractor, and homeowners association. Now there's a pilot program and the situation is better, which is cooperation. With Hope Village, what I see is people trying to help some homeless people, though they won't be able to help everyone. It's only 30 homes, but it will be the world for all those 30 who are fragile. But there's issues. And I'm seeing pushback not to acknowledge the process issues that I've heard voiced. There were, what, 17 possible sites? And the site chosen is on the edge of town? There isn't a grocery, there isn't a bank branch, and there's other issues? When did staff know where the possible sites were? Did they know and not answer when asked by, in community meetings? And if it's about a grocery store and the official explanation is "it's not profitable", that sounds like a pretext for systemic discrimination. Urbana has a proclamation about that. There needs to be a better choice than can't. I don't fault the people who are working face-to-face with homeless people to grab funding to help those 30. But higher up, on the level of funding, some projects are chosen and others aren't. There's enough for everyone if people don't take advantage and game the things in their favor. There's a root issue, the rent's too damn high. Someone last week reported there's an affordable housing building that has vacancies because the rent's too high. That's a red flag. Back to the neighbors affected. If Hope Village item goes through, the cities and county need to get together for some kind of Savannah Green-type pull-together to mitigate the neglect and the process harms done. So I'm glad Danielle said something about that. It's not wrong to point out when things are unfair and demand better. People in this city and county pay federal taxes. Too much is grabbed by war. What's sent back for housing isn't enough. Instead, there's corruption. There's gobs of USA-made bombs that are destroying people's lives and houses in Gaza, and that's wrong. People aren't paying their fair share. And I'm talking about social contract here, not tax law. There's a lot of people taking advantage instead of being good neighbors. That's why the wealth gap keeps getting wider and wider. We know there's going to be more homeless. The rents are too high. The rich keep getting richer. It's all connected. We can do better and we should. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for speaking.
Good evening, council. My name is Karen Roberson. And I sent an email to all the council people earlier today, but I didn't have the instructions on how to make it a part of the public record. I did that later in the day. But just to make sure there's no confusion, I'm going to read my email now. "My family currently owns property at 707 Bethune Court in the Carver Park subdivision. And I'm here tonight to express my concerns regarding the continued disrespect, indifference, and organized pattern of mistreatment of the African-American community in Champagne, Urbana. I was born and raised in Champagne. And historically, the North End has systematically been ignored, disregarded, and neglected ever since I can remember. All a direct result of legal and social oppression. Here we are, 2024. And the Hope Village is yet another project that has been disrespectfully rushed, pushed forward without proper notification, and the community's input completely disregarded and glossed over, and their concerns not being addressed at all. For the sake of redundancy, I will not go into the specifics of our concerns at this time. The Carver Park Neighborhood Association and the other subdivisions surrounding the Hope Village have appeared before this council and attended meetings with various city officials on numerous occasions, and they meticulously outlined our concerns. I am for the homeless. I support and believe the concept of Hope Village is a great initiative. However, without significant modifications being made to the preliminary plans and until the concerns of the people who live in the community are adequately addressed, we cannot support the approval of the existing Hope Village plans. The impact of this project in its current state would adversely impact the community and cause irreparable harm to Urbana-Champaign's oldest historical African-American community. It is for these reasons I am asking each councilperson to vote no on the existing plans for the Hope Village. Thank you for your time."
Thank you.
Hello? Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, is this on? I'm sorry. Hello? My name is Joanne Buddy. And I'm here to say that the residents of Carver Neighborhood think that they're being ignored and mistreated by city staff and officials because they are a minority community. Not so. The city and staff attorney and various boards and councils ignore and mistreat everyone in this city. I went out to Carver Drive a few weeks ago on a Sunday. There were cars parked in the street, dogs, kids playing, all things that will make it difficult for ambulances and fire trucks to get through. And on a weekday, add in delivery trucks and garbage trucks. And it's just going to be like a maze to try to get through there to get to Hope Village. And so I have to ask, do you have plans long-term to prevent on-street parking for these people? Because otherwise, how are these emergency vehicles going to get down this street without weaving in and out of cars and kids and dogs? Federal Drive is a wide commercial street, no kids, no on-street parking, easy access. And are you really going to reward the developers by saying, "We can't change it because they already built part of it without a permit"? I mean, they're going to be rewarded because they did something wrong, illegal? And even if the community center is already built, which it looks like it is, there can still be access from Federal Drive. There's a wide street, you can just change the driveway. It looks like the pathway is already there for construction vehicles. It does not have to be on Carver Drive. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, council members. Mayor Marlin, my name is now pastor Melinda Carr, recently elevated. I'm going to read the addendum from our petition that was submitted today. And we encountered some, the last meeting, we got word that our protest was invalid. And then we received information on December 21st. So we were scrambling, trying to get signatures before Christmas. And we did work during that time, even on yesterday, in a meeting together on New Year's Day, so we could have something submitted today. I'm going to read from this addendum. Note, this section is submitted with reference petition opposing development of Hope Village and access through Carver Drive, Champagne, Illinois. Note, this section is submitted with signatures. And in addition to the original petition previously presented to the Urbana City Council, these additional signatures are from property owners whose names appeared on the second list provided by City of Urbana staff. Please also note that the second list provided by City of Urbana staff includes additional names that were not listed in their original mailing to the property owners within 250 feet of the subject development. The majority of those listed on the second list did not receive the required notice from City of Urbana staff of this development. Further note, this addendum is necessary due to City of Urbana staff stating the original petition of protest is not valid due to not having additional signatures of property owners they added on the second list given to our representatives, to which at least three property owners listed on their, I'm not going to list the names, but listed on their second list, signed the original petition. And at least another three listed are deceased. The spouse of the deceased, who is listed on the second list, still lives in the home originally built by her and her husband and is owner of the property, although his name still appears on the property records as his death occurred in July of 2021. This is also true of another person and whose descendants now own and live in the properties inherited or trusted to them. In the original petition, the signature of the person appears on page eight, line seven, on page seven, listing the names. And then Mount Olive Baptist Church was not listed on the original mailing list and did not receive the required notice of this development. Signing on behalf of Mount Olive Baptist Church, Mount Olive Baptist Church, excuse me, is a trustee, and we give the page number and the line. Lastly, the second list provided by the City of Urbana listed only names and not addresses of the properties owned by those individuals or companies. This presents a hardship in trying to obtain signatures from those property owners or knowledge of proof that they own property within the required footage of the development. This completed petition is presented with great humility and desire that the signatures and emails of those included will suffice the requirements needed for valid protest. So we did get word that the protest is valid. But what we went through to get to this point, there must be changes because there are going to be legal battles. Because of what we went through, we know. Violations and, you know, just requirements and things that didn't match or discrepancies. And because we had to stay the course through the Christmas break, even yesterday, that we were not going to give up, that we got to this point. So I just wanted to share this with you on today, so that you will know what we went through. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Darlene Bailey. And first of all, I'd like to start out by saying we were never told that there would be a lot of walking. We were told that there wouldn't be hardly any traveling or walking in and out of Hope Village. So we had no idea that it would be a lot of people going around Kenyon Road. We were told something entirely different. And that's what we were after. That's what we were talking about. If that's the case, then you can use Federal Drive. But I see a lot of other things going on here as well. This is not just about the homeless when you take a really good look at this. And I have been over the comprehensive plan over and over and over. I viewed city council meetings over and over. And it's a lot going on here, and this can go a lot of different ways. And one of my questions this evening is, are there other... And one of my questions this evening is, are there other programs attached to Hope Village? Because it seems as if we're going to have a lot more traffic. And another thing, I still see the Climate Action Plan in this. I still see a lot of what's in the Climate Action Plan being implemented through Hope Village. This may not be true. It may be something that I'm overthinking, but after looking at this for a long time, I just did not get into this. And the notification process, the rush, anytime you rush a project like that, you're going to have problems. You need to take time, think this out, give the contractor time if he run into problems, and then you have to give the neighborhood a little time to warm up to this. You know, when you push something down somebody's throat, the automatic reaction is to step back, and that's with anyone. And we have a lot coming down the pipeline here, and it's going to be a lot of things going on here in this world, in this United States, that is going to change the very fabric of our lives. And we need to come together, and it needs a, I'm still going to ask that investments be made in our community. We need to be self-supporting. We also need to be able to support Hope Village. Right now, you're in a stressed area that cannot support Hope Village the way it should be. So investments need to be made in that community so that we can. You don't just destroy one to help the other. We're saying, "Help us both," and we will do what we need to do to help the other people that we can. But I also, please, let me know if there are other programs attached to Hope Village, because this is something we were never told, but this is something that I ran into during my research. Thank you so much for listening to me, and thank you for your time, and I'm pretty sure you're going to make a very good decision this evening, if this this evening.
I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. Good evening, everyone. Counsel, the fiduciary responsibility, not Carl, not the University of Illinois, or anyone else. I said I wouldn't get to say. Number one, and it's talking about going, my husband and I went up there again last Sunday, and he's a builder. You saw right in behind the church and right not 20 feet from those people's homes that gave retention or detention upon. What I wanted to say is, with Federal Drive, why not the peers like the University of Illinois and Carl Hospital work with MTD if there's a problem with moving some of the, they've done, MTD has worked in Champaign, and they are entity to themselves, and we pay taxes for MTD too. So why can't, let me hurry up and go ahead. They work with MTD and make any changes that need to be changed, because it's been, "Street Bishop, we looked at, what's wrong with going that way?" It must be somebody in power don't want it to go there. It must be that, because there's no other reason why it couldn't be there. Isn't that what you said, Bishop?
That's right. Federal Drive, they already put rock there to build, to build on Federal Drive, but something happened and they didn't complete the street. They still got that rock there.
Okay. And Carl, Mr. Leonard, the president of Carl, is the registered agent. Now, I know you're a lawyer, you know what a registered agent is in Illinois. Everything got to go to him, is that right? I know you can't answer, but he's the registered agent. So why couldn't he work with MTD and the University of Illinois? Land-grant institution. Now, you know about every institution is not land-grant. Land-grant academic research and public service, they call it public engagement.
Dr. Underwood, could you make sure you speak into the mic so your words are recorded?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You can hear it, but the folks at home might not.
Okay. I'm sorry. I can't hear too well, but I've ordered my hearing aids. They should be coming in soon, and that's why I might sound loud. But anyway, did I say a land-grant institution? How are they going to come against a vulnerable, V-U-L-N-E-R-A-B-L-E, community? That's what it was called publicly, and we know that's what we are. Nobody could live anywhere but dirt and the tent top. We was at a dinner last night, and we were talking about what we've been through, the tent top. If you've been here and born here, you know about the tent top. One lady, "People of means now," but they started in the tent top, because they couldn't live nowhere else. But in 1952, George Washington Carver, was it '42? And then '52 was, it's called Christmas Addict's Court. And then '62, Dr. Ellis subdivision. And later on, Dr. Martin Luther King subdivision. But now, like we were saying last night, I was with people of means. We can live anywhere if we can afford it, unless, well, they're still, they said, "Not really," because there's still some stuff going on. You know, even if you got some money, you know, there's stuff going on, but we got to get out of this, like this lady said. We're going to face some stuff. I was listening to the news tonight again. We better come together. We better come together, and we need to hold our elected official accountable to everybody in Jesus' name. And I'm not apostolizing, I'm just saying that's what I believe. And I'm open to 1 Samuel 17, 1, David and Goliath, a little shepherd boy, but God.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Esther Pat, and I spoke last time. I just want to say a few things. And first and foremost, I cannot stress the importance of accessible housing in our community. We are so lacking in accessible housing, and I did ask tonight to check on this, a very particular need that is, and this is all over the country, this problem, is places where people can, that have wheel and showers, and these homes are going to have wheel and showers. On a personal note, my sister-in-law has multiple sclerosis, and she is paying way too much money, my brother and she are paying way too much money for an apartment because it's accessible, and it's actually really accessible. A lot of things are called accessible, but you can't turn around in a wheelchair in the bathroom, so that's not really accessible. But she needs a wheel and shower, and it is so, so hard to find a place with it, and this is going to be 30 units with wheel and showers. This project is supposed to benefit the community, and I overheard an interview with one of the council members talking about what the benefit would be to the other people in the community, but the people who live in Hope Village will be part of the community too, and a benefit to the Urbana community is to have wheelchair-accessible housing with wheel and showers. I also wanted to just mention one more thing about, as far as the homeless, and the idea that somehow homeless people are more trouble to take care of. Homeless people move into Steer Place and into Sunny Crest Manor, and into, sometimes into privately-owned apartments and Crystalview Townhomes, and all sorts of places. I think somehow there's some idea that the homeless are like, there's a little country of the homeless, and then we're going to come move them here, but they already live all over this community when they can get housing, and the whole purpose of this project is to get housing for at least a small number of the people who need it. So I really do hope that you will consider the extreme benefits to our community of having this project and approve it. Thank you so much.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Okay, we do have a fair number of emails that were sent and asked to be read into the record. I think Mary Alice, do you want to go first? And we'll take five minutes, three minutes for each one of those.
All right. City Council member Sharius Hershey had asked me to read this into the record. She's unfortunately not able to be here tonight. This is in regards to Hope Village Development, access through Carver Drive at Champaign, Illinois. Dear Mayor Marlin and the Urbana City Council members, we ask that you delay action on voting of the reference project this evening. We believe that some of the responses by city staff and Carl to questions concerning this project have not been adequately addressed. We also believe city staff and Carl have not been transparent with some of the issues pertaining to this development. In Mr. Marty Smith's letter to the mayor and council dated December 15, 2023, he refers to this development as a, quote, "partnership," end quote, with the City of Urbana. Looking at this from a public eye view, it would appear that this project is a done deal because of the City of Urbana referred to as a partner. Is this because of the monies the City of Urbana contributed to this development? There are a few safety concerns from residents of the neighborhood, the detention-retention pond being one, and chronically homeless and medically fragile. Although we have repeatedly emphasized that we are not opposed to the concept such as this for the chronically and medically fragile homeless, our words have been misconstrued or twisted to appear as though we do not empathize with their needs. Please note for the record that we are considerate and empathize with the needs, welfare, and safety of all homeless individuals, both chronically and medically fragile. Our concern was the location for this development and the access through Carver Drive, a Champaign street in the historical subdivision, i.e. the first African-American subdivision in Champaign-Urbana, Illinois. We value the legacy of the Carver Park subdivision and wish to preserve it. In selecting the location of the site for this project, 18 sites were provided by the City, by the City of Urbana. It is still unclear to the residents why this area adjacent to Carver Park subdivision was selected when other sites would have met the criteria. There were other sites with vacant land that would eliminate any need for demolition of existing homes or displaced residents. These sites also had access to public transportation and would have met the guidelines of the City of the Urbana zoning ordinance. 12 acres were purchased. If this project does not intend to use the full 12 acres, why was not only the amount of land needed purchased? The development is accessed on Federal Drive. It has not adequately been addressed why access to and from the site cannot occur from the street. If Federal Drive is not a dedicated street, why can it not be made and alleviate coming through Carver Park? Federal Drive access accommodates the staff, residents, and guests of Hope Village and any vehicles that would enter, including vendors, delivery, sanitation, and emergency vehicles. Turnaround for emergency vehicles is better suited off of Federal Drive and then to Lincoln Avenue. There appears to be no significant response time for emergency vehicles in accessing Hope Village from Lincoln Avenue to Kenyon to Federal Drive versus Lincoln Avenue to Bradley Avenue to Carver Drive. The streets in Carver are much more narrow, with their cars being parked on both sides of the street, and are already in need of repair. If access to Bradley Avenue is of utmost importance, why wasn't the temporary road across Goodwin Avenue considered versus coming through Carver Drive? If transportation or bus access is an issue, the remainder of these should be found in our email and will be entered into the record. Thank you.
The complete statement will be entered into the record. We have about a dozen other emails that ask to be read. This is from Jenny Putman. I'm a decades-long Urbana resident writing to urge our older women and men to vote for the final approval of a permanent planned unit development that will enable the Hope Village project team to proceed with construction of permanent homes for the most vulnerable residents of our community. I'm grateful to all council members and staff for the respect with which you have patiently listened to Hope Village proponents and opponents as late as 10:45 p.m. at your meeting last December 18th. I was impressed at that meeting to hear the Hope Village project team respond to concerns raised by some residents of Dr. Ellis, George Washington Carver, Christmas Addicts, and Dr. Martin Luther King subdivisions. I applaud the practical solutions proposed to questions about parking, construction traffic, drainage, the detention pond, and possible mosquito breeding. Throughout Urbana, we can cheer the commitment by Ameren, Illinois, to upgrade street lighting in neighborhoods adjacent to Hope Village and to review the area's neglected infrastructure. In this sense, the focus on Hope Village has already earned a bonus for our community. The need is far greater than the 30 tiny homes that Hope Village would add to our inventory, but the project is a step in the right direction that could be emulated by communities elsewhere in Illinois and in other states. This is a letter from Eileen Oldham. If there's anything the pandemic did was to shine a light on a number of issues facing this country, one being homelessness. As I've heard before, they should never be a homeless veteran in this country, and oftentimes they are the victims of homelessness. Thank you, Claudia Lenhoff and the Champaign County healthcare consumers, for bringing this amazing idea to my attention. The collaborative efforts between CCHCC, Carl Hospital, and UIUC is genius and forward-thinking. The City of Urbana could position itself as the beacon of light for other states who struggle with finding ways to assist the homeless. This program has the potential to be the blueprint in guiding other states in not just assisting the homeless, but perhaps developing temporary housing for immigrants. There's so much truth in the saying, "It takes a village," and this program is proof of that. The council's approval of the Hope Village planned unit development will extend a lifeline to so many homeless citizens in this country. This is an email from Mary Ann Wilson. Please read my message into the record. I'm a longtime resident of the City of Urbana, and I am writing to urge the Urbana City Council to support Hope Village by approving the Hope Village planned unit development. We urgently need more permanent housing for our most vulnerable community members, and Hope Village will fill a gap in current offerings. This is a letter from Jasmine Eisen, Senior Information Services Supervisor from Chris Healthy Aging. Dear our City of Urbana Plan Commission members, Urbana Mayor Diane Marlin, and City Council members, I'm writing to express my support for Hope Village. I believe it exemplifies a strong commitment to the community and its aging, medically fragile residents. At Chris, our mission is to keep older adults safe, healthy, and independent in their own homes for as long as possible. Our senior information services caseworkers are the gateway for clients to be connected to resources that meet their needs. In recent years, there's been a significant increase in the number of unhoused clients being referred to our organization for assistance. In working with local partners, we've strived to meet these needs in support of the unhoused population. Requests for items such as medical supplies, medicine, hygiene items, forms of ID, and cell phones all require a stable address to assist in most cases. This barrier alone makes a significant difference in being able to obtain services for basic needs and assessments for services. Additionally, these referrals may not include those individuals with a disability, experiencing a mental illness, or struggling with substance abuse. As we are all a part of an aging population, we will continue to see an increase in the number of individuals needing assistance with housing but falling short of the traditional programming in place. The Hope Village project would undoubtedly make a significant impact on the chronically unhoused, medically fragile individuals we assist daily. With the proposed localized support and programming, I hope that this project will be approved as a planned unit development. I urge you all to consider supporting the Hope Village project, as it would greatly enrich the lives of so many deserving individuals in our community. This is a message from Darcy Gentner. I am writing to urge the Urbana City Council to support Hope Village by approving the Hope Village planned unit development. We need more permanent housing for our most vulnerable community members. I've lived in the Champaign-Urbana area all my life. Rents have become ridiculously high and unaffordable, and couple that with the record number of us baby boomers who are retiring now. This is one solution that will prevent death. Please support this project. This email's from Howard Berenberg. I've lived in Urbana for more than 30 years. I'm writing to urge the Urbana City Council to support Hope Village by approving the Hope Village planned unit development. My heart goes out to those in our community who are both medically vulnerable and chronically homeless. They desperately need our support. Please, let's take this opportunity to help them. This message is from Julia Freeman. Please read my message into the record. I'm writing to urge the Urbana City Council to support Hope Village by voting to approve the Hope Village planned unit development on January 2nd. I've lived in Urbana for four years. It breaks my heart to see people who are unhoused, sick, and struggling in our community in one of the richest countries in the world. We need more permanent housing for our most vulnerable community members. Hope Village is... vulnerable community members. Hope Village is not a complete solution, but it's an excellent step in the right direction. This message is from Katie DeFonis. I'm a proponent of Hope Village because of the resources and support it would provide to our most vulnerable community members. Housing is a basic necessity that you and I have relatively easy access to. This is not the case for the population that's unhoused. Not everyone has access to affordable or fair housing. With the creation of Hope Village, those overlooked by the system would have an opportunity to find a home. This also would provide these individuals with a sense of community, something new or unfamiliar, as they have likely never felt as if they belonged to, in, or with the CU community before. Thank you for your time and consideration. I realize I wasn't giving Darcy enough time to reset the clock. Sorry about that. Dear Urbana City Council, I'm a resident of Urbana, Illinois. This message is from Paula Marie Lucy. Please read my message into the record. I'm writing to urge the Urbana City Council to support Hope Village by approving the Hope Village planned unit development. We need more permanent housing for our most vulnerable community members. This message is from Jane Sbrandell. I'm writing to urge the Urbana City Council to support Hope Village by approving the Hope Village planned unit development. I currently serve on the Champaign County Mental Health Board, and I know firsthand that we need to do more to help some of our more vulnerable neighbors. They need more permanent housing so their quality of life will improve. Please allow those who are willing to stand up for these folks to continue on with their mission to give these less fortunate than myself and possibly yourself a chance to thrive. Thank you. This message is from Sarah McAvoy. I'm writing to urge the Urbana City Council to support Hope Village by approving the Hope Village planned unit development. We need more permanent housing for our most vulnerable community members. In 2009 and 2010, when many unhoused people were living at our Osco Romero Parish Center at my church, St. Mary's in Champaign, I worked with students at the University of Illinois and with the then city planner Libby and her team. UIUC students had built one physical model of a tiny home, and we were urging the city to scale it up. Here we are, all these years later, with the dream of Hope Village before you. I wholeheartedly encourage you to vote in favor to build more homes in Urbana. This message is from Jeff Makota, or Makoda. I'm writing to urge the Urbana City Council to support Hope Village by approving the Hope Village planned unit development. We need more permanent housing for our most vulnerable community members. This message is from Allison Jones. My name is Allison Jones. I live in Champaign. I work in Urbana. CU is one of the most vibrant communities in Illinois, and I'm so proud to live here. Our public agencies, from the park districts to the township offices and city governments, regularly come up with innovative ways to care for our community members. We have a great opportunity here with Hope Village to continue this legacy of innovative progressive programs that yield results. Please support this program with a final approval tonight. This message is from Shay Belahi. Dear City Council members and Mayor Marlin, I'm writing today to express my support for Hope Village. I've been a resident of Urbana for almost 20 years, and I reside in James Quisenberry's Ward 7. I've been confused over the issue involving the use of Carver Drive as the street leading to the entrance of Hope Village. I live on Florida Avenue in Urbana, and I have ambulance, fire, and police going up and down my road almost every day, along with all the usual traffic. This kind of traffic is part of living within a community, having public services such as ambulance and fire available to those who may need them. The traffic impact from Hope Village is estimated to be about 15 cars per day in the morning, 15 cars at the end of the day. All of these cars can be accommodated in the Hope Village parking lot and will not be allowed to park on Carver Drive. This is far less traffic than what was on Carver Drive when Francis Nelson Health Center was open and serving hundreds of local patients. It's also far less traffic than what the neighborhood would have experienced if the Union Gardens development proposed in 2018 had been built on the same site north of Carver Drive. That development would have had 406 units, with those units ending up having up to four bedrooms each, and an estimated 1,099 vehicles. Medically fragile homeless individuals need a safe, private, and secure home to live in, just like any of us. Imagine being so sick and so vulnerable and having to fight to survive another day and not having a place of your own to lay your head down at night. Imagine being terminally ill and knowing you don't have long to live but having no secure place to live. That's a tragedy that too many in our community are facing, and it's unjust. We have the opportunity to fix it for our community members if we only have the will to do so. Please remember that many of the individuals who have become homeless in our community did so after suffering a significant health crisis, subsequent job loss. Many are without family who can help them get through their loss of housing. Having a safety net, a safe place to land in a time of real crisis, should not be a privilege. It should be a community imperative. Whether we like to think so or not, we are all just one brain injury away from homelessness. A fall, a bad car accident, an act of violence, these things can utterly destabilize a person's life, and they can end up on the streets. And by the way, Ward 7 in Urbana is not without its share of homeless individuals. Likewise, Ward 7 has several housing units where previously homeless individuals live and caused no problems for their neighbors. The Champaign-Urbana community needs Hope Village as a safety net for those who are experiencing chronic homelessness and who have significant debilitating health issues. Please vote yes on Hope Village. This message is from Josh Payne. My name is Josh Payne. I'm a longtime resident of Urbana. I've been living in the Aspen Courts complex at 1553 Hunter Drive for the past three years. I'm writing to you because I wanted to shed some light into a real-life situation currently ongoing in the Aspen Courts Lehman neighborhood, where I believe Hope Village may have an immediate impact on the life of a chronically homeless individual and in the lives of many others. Unknown to many, for the past 12 to 13 months, we've had a homeless person living in our laundry facility at Aspen Courts. Before she started living in the laundry facility, she used to sleep in a chair under a tree right outside the office of Aspen Courts in the grass by the bus stop. Rain, sleet, or snow, Ms. Judy would cover herself in coats and garbage bags to stay dry and warm. The situation became so dire to many of us who would bring her food and clothing, hear her coughing and sneezing, seeing that she was visibly ill from the conditions she endured. Complaint after complaint by community members and residents would pour into the office, which led to multiple police incidents, and Ms. Judy was even temporarily barred from the property to encourage her to find another place to live. But every time she was temporarily barred, she would always return. Having the relationship with my property manager, Ashley McCollum, that I do, I looked for additional ways to assist, like referrals to community resources and shelters, all of which Ashley said she has also tried to do. Ashley informed me that this resident used to live in Aspen Courts a long ago and was evicted under previous management when it was called Scottswood Apartments, but she never left the area. She had suffered many traumas during her time living in Scottswood Apartments and only saw this as her home. Even after eviction, she would always return. In her mid to late 50s now, her health has gotten worse and worse. Her mental health has taken a serious downturn. When you speak to her, she's always polite and gentle, but often you can see her outside the laundry room with no one around, talking to herself, screaming and yelling, reliving past traumas. Ms. Ashley, our property manager, shared with me all the efforts and resources she invested and called upon to assist her out of desperate situation, but she has consistently refused them all. To be honest, the situation has become tragic. Due to her unwillingness to leave and her deteriorating health, Ashley felt there was no way she could keep barring her from the property and keep refusing to help her. So after clearing it with the administration, she opened up the laundry facility for her and allowed Ms. Judy to bring her favorite chair with her and all her belongings, bags of clothes and food, into the community laundry room to give her a warm place to stay at night. She's been in there now for over 12 months and has never bothered or harmed a single soul. Yet, no matter how many times she was forced to leave, she just kept coming back. No matter how many times she was referred to community resources for help, she refused. When asked by Aspen Court residents, "Why is she still staying in the laundry room?" Ms. Judy has often been heard saying, "I ain't jumping through no hoops no more. If it ain't my own place to stay, I don't want it." The rest of the letter will be included in its entirety in the meeting record. And the last item to be read into the record is from Babatunde Amayo. Dear members of the City Council and Honorable Mayor Diane Marlin, imagine waking each morning to the symphony of city sounds, not as a lullaby, but as a harsh reminder of your isolation. Imagine the open sky, not as a canvas of possibility, but as a cold reality reflecting the lack of a roof over your head. This is the stark reality for the chronically homeless and medically fragile individuals among us. I understand the concerns swirling in the community, the anxieties about safety, the worries about property values, the whispers of them and us, but let's pause and breathe past the fear. Let's remember that beneath the same moonlit sky, within the tapestry of our diverse city, reside lives just as human as our own. Lives woven with threads of hardship, yes, but also resilience and a desperate yearning for belonging. The proposed Hope Village isn't just about bricks and mortar. It's about extending a hand to those grappling with life's harshest blows. It's about offering specialized homes and care to the medically fragile, breaking the cycle of illness and isolation. It's about showing, not just telling, that compassion is the strongest foundation we can build on. This isn't about charity, dear City Council, but about shared humanity. It's about recognizing that our safety isn't threatened by individuals down on their luck, but by the walls we build around our hearts. It's about understanding that inclusion, not exclusion, is the key to a vibrant, thriving community. Let's not judge a book by its worn cover, nor define a person by their temporary misfortune. Let's open our hearts, engage in dialogue, and embrace the opportunity to build a community where every life finds its rightful place under the same boundless sky. We are all walking the same path under the same stars. Let's choose to walk it together with eyes open and hearts willing to understand. Only then can we truly call ourselves a united, compassionate community. By embracing the individuals who are experiencing chronic homelessness and who are medically fragile, we pave the way for a community defined, not by exclusivity, but by the strength of our collective empathy. In this endeavor, let us stand united, proving that our community's heart beats with compassion for all, transcending the barriers that may seek to divide us. I urge the Urbana City Council to vote yes for Hope Village. Thank you. And that's all I have. Do you have any others, Darcy? No, okay. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak, if you haven't spoken already? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to council input and communications. I do have, I do have one announcement, and that is on January 19th. Still a couple weeks away, but just to get it on your calendars. 5:00 p.m. at Martin Luther King School, there will be a meeting regarding the Dr. Ellis sewer laterals and the repairs that the city of Urbana will be making. If you recall, the council allocated $1.3 million in ARPA funds to line the sewer laterals in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. So this will be available for up to 144 privately-owned laterals. And the meeting is to provide information about the process. In order for this work to be done, the city and the contractors have to obtain access to your private property and have agreements for that. And the work can involve cleaning, televising, sewer repairs, lining, or replacement, depending on the condition. So this is one of the longstanding, decades-long concern of the Dr. Ellis subdivision, which the council is addressing through this ARPA funding. And this meeting is, I believe, the first one to be scheduled to provide information on that. So again, that is January 19th, Martin Luther King School at 5:00 p.m., and it'll be held by the Urbana Public Works Department. Okay, well, there are no reports of standing committees. We'll move on to committee of the whole report. Grace.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, on the regular agenda, I move for approval ordinance number 2023-12-050, an ordinance approving a final development plan for a planned unit development, plan case number 2480-PUD23.
Community development, was there anything to add on this topic?
Uh, no, but I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Okay.
I'll second.
A second, sorry. Moved by Grace. Okay, this is seconded by Shandra. I would note that's because a valid petition of protest has been submitted. That triggers a requirement for a two-thirds vote in support of the project by the older persons currently seated. So, questions? And then we'll go to discussion. Mary Alice?
Yes, I have a question for staff based on some of the input tonight. I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to how the names are gathered for the protest. Speak to that?
You mean how we figure out who, which names are valid?
So, a couple of things. The first one is, is that are people in the city of Champaign part of that 250?
They are, yes.
They are part of that. So how are those identified for people who want to make a legal protest? Are they given the names on record, and are they given the addresses?
Um, I, I provided the names to, to the people who wanted to protest. And the way you do that is just, it's a mapping exercise where you look at all properties within 250 feet of the, of the parcel in question. And so I pulled down all those names. I can't recall if I, if I gave addresses along with those names. I don't have that in front of me. I believe I did.
So, so the, the map that you use, is that from CGIS?
I use just a desktop GIS program to make those maps. So it's, it's similar.
I'm just trying to figure out how you map, how you match the actual address with the name. Are those from property records?
They are, yeah. There's, so every tax parcel has, has the taxpayer information associated with it. And then, so it's just a matter of selecting all the parcels that are within that 250 feet, and then exporting that as a, essentially as an Excel file.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just gonna go down the line here. Chris?
Yeah, Kevin, you've, you've probably already answered this, but I was looking through the, all the information over the weekend, and the plan commission gave us this, the preliminary July 31st, or for July 31st, with a recommendation that nothing be built on the property until the final PUD was approved. And you, as staff, erased that, or crossed that condition off. And could you just review why that was done?
Sure. Well, two of the, the buildings, and those are the buildings that are under construction right now. So the community center and then a model home could be built as a byright development. So there's really no way that we could hold up the building of a byright development, sort of hold that over them while the, you know, while the PUD got processed.
So the plan commission erred in its recommendation?
Well, I, I don't know if I'd say that. I, I think we, I think when they proposed that, we hadn't thought about that possibility and how exactly that should work. And then once we, you know, once we consulted with the city attorney and, you know, and determined that, no, there's really, like, we really can't hold a byright development up, then we suggested striking that recommendation.
And maybe for all of our educations, what does it mean by right?
That means you don't need to get any sort of approvals by plan commissioner, city council, or zoning board. It's a, you know, it is a use that is allowed in the zoning district, so all they need to do is just go through a regular process of getting building permits and such. Thank you. You're welcome.
Shandra?
How many, I guess, buildings or pieces on a property constitute a PUD? Does that question make sense?
I, I mean, a PUD can be any number of buildings. So, and they're kind of, it's, it's kind of on a case-by-case basis. So, and they're kind of, it's, it's kind of on a case-by-case basis.
Grace, and then we'll go to James.
Thank you. I think most of my questions have been asked and answered, fortunately, but I was wondering if we could just loop back around to clarifying about building the community center and what's written in the actual ordinance here tonight with the recommendations from the Plan Commission with their finding based on some quoting a section saying that no building permit or certificate of occupancy, if no building permit is required, shall be issued before issuance of a planned unit development permit. And I'm wondering if you could just clarify on that. Is that, again, some kind of confusion within the commission or not relevant? Or why is that maybe not the case, but still stated in the ordinance?
Well, it's, so, I emailed you the ordinance that was actually passed on July 31st by City Council, and as, as Chris was just talking about, the ordinance that council passed did not include that piece. I think what you have, what you're looking at now is probably the draft ordinance, which we drafted based on the Plan Commission's recommendation. But then that piece was struck for the final ordinance.
Yeah, so I'm talking about something else here now. I'm talking about in the ordinance that is up for tonight, the whereas clause that's from the Plan Commission from their most recent meeting. I'm sorry to throw you on the spot here.
Oh, no, 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 that's okay. Sorry, I misunderstood.
Just because it seems to me like that, that is saying that the building wasn't allowed. And it seems like, okay, so the issue being that the community center has been under construction and saying, is it allowed or not? And saying, yes, because when that preliminary PUD came to council, we struck language prohibiting construction because that is allowed by right. And I do remember we had discussions, we were aware that they were going to start building that. So I feel like that was not a hidden or illegal thing for them to start building. And yet, still, in the Plan Commission recent discussion, and in the whereas clause of our ordinance here tonight, it seems to be saying that that construction wasn't allowed, quoting, I'm not sure what section this is quoting.
Sure, yeah. Well, it says 16-7 of the zoning ordinance. So I repeated what the Plan Commissioner said. I believe the Plan Commissioner took issue and disagreed with, with staff, which is fine. So I just put in exactly the verbatim comments from the Plan Commissioner. So they were quoting that section of, of the ordinance. But we're not, in, in this ordinance before you, we're not actually tying anything to that. So, you know, we've got the two conditions in the following section. This is just, I wanted to be accurate in how we portrayed what the Plan Commission said at their meeting, and why they were making the recommendation that they made.
Okay, but it's not, the current construction is not against the Section 7 of the zoning ordinance, is I guess the question?
No, I don't believe it is.
Because it was in the preliminary PUD? I'm sorry, I wasn't sure section of what, or I would have looked this up earlier.
Well, let me, I can look up that section here.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I think there's a reference in, and the ordinance is wrong. We don't have a Section 16-7, but I'll try and look that up here in a sec.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here. I did watch that meeting, and I, that's what I thought it was going from, the Commissioner's statements of facts. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had two and two all together, and that we didn't have some erroneous or misleading language in the ordinance itself, and just kind of making sure that we're squared away with the ordinance. So thanks for looking into that.
James?
Yeah, I'd go ahead and ask my question, but I think I'm gonna need Kevin for that too, so I don't want to interrupt him in his research there.
Ask away.
I can wait until...
No, if you, if you want to ask, we'll keep looking.
So, just bear with me a little bit here. So they can build the two buildings, the buildings that they're building by right? They could not build a third building? Is that the size of it? They, they get to build two buildings there?
Well, I mean, it all depends on what they would be using the buildings for. So right now, it's just the community center and then a model home. So all that falls under the use of being an institution of a charitable nature, which is allowed by right in that zone. But if they wanted to put up homes that people are actually going to live in, then that would, then that would not be by right. Essentially, we don't, well, we don't allow more than one home on a lot. So if you were to build two homes on a lot, that's not allowed.
Has to be divided before additional homes are built?
Well, or they have to get the planned unit development. And that's kind of the, the whole crux of why they needed the planned unit development in the first place, was to allow multiple homes on a site.
Okay, and, and again, bear with me, one more question. If, if the, if they had to stop here, if the PUD wasn't approved, those two buildings, how would they get access to those via a road?
Through Carver Drive.
But whether or not there's a PUD, they, they have a right to extend Carver Drive as their driveway?
That's correct, yes.
Essentially?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary Alice?
So I'm not sure who to direct this question to. There've been mentions about certain infrastructure needs in Carver. I've heard some information about sidewalks and lights and so forth. So I'm wondering if somebody on staff or somebody from the project could speak a little bit to those that have been talked about?
I think someone from the project probably has the most information. Anyone wish to do that?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand the question as clearly as I can.
Sure. I'm wondering if there's been mention of some investments being made in the Carver Park neighborhood. Basically, it's come to light some of the things that are needed there. I was wondering if you could talk to or speak to any commitments that you've received in terms of sidewalks, drive, what, you know, not driveway, sorry, streets, lights, et cetera?
Certainly, that's a good question. So, many of the issues that we heard during our neighborhood meetings, as it related to Hope Village...
Could you speak, hold the microphone up closer?
Is this better?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So many of the concerns we heard during the neighborhood meetings were related to neighborhood issues, city and municipal issues, and lots of past due maintenance and disrepair of the neighborhood itself, really not related to Hope Village, or something that Hope Village could address during our planning and construction process. However, as a hopeful neighbor within the Carver Drive subdivision with Hope Village, we have a vested interest in our surrounding environment. So we did entertain discussions with the City of Champaign and Ameren as to what they could do to assist the neighborhood going forward, above and beyond what they were going to do to help Hope Village. So Hope Village is not in a position to commit infrastructure repairs to the, the city infrastructure. However, in light of the neighborhood meetings and what was learned there, we did get the attention of City of Champaign Neighborhood Services. And through those discussions, while I can't commit to the City of Champaign, we were told that the replacement of Dorie Miller Drive is slated for the '25 capital season, and that additional repairs were being looked at as far as sidewalk repairs, street repairs, and, and the like. Additionally, we learned from the City of Champaign Neighborhood Services that as an organized neighborhood organization, there are grants and other eligible funds that can help improve infrastructure, safety, lighting, and things like that. Our meetings with Ameren, while we were working with Ameren to look at lots of energy sustainable measures within our, within our project, did commit to looking at all the infrastructure from Ameren's perspective, the subsurface wiring, the street lighting, and things like that, where they could commit and look at funds that could improve Carver Drive subdivision from Ameren's perspective.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I found the section. It's, it's 133-J7. And I'll just read that, that whole section, and then not just the quoted part, just so that everybody's on the same page. So this is, well, that Section 133-J is for Final Planned Unit Development Review. And that specific Section 7 under J says, "Once expressly authorized by the City Council pursuant to the preliminary and final planned unit development plan procedures, the zoning administrator shall then issue a planned unit development permit in accordance with the approved plan. No building permit or certificate of occupancy, if no building permit is required, shall be issued before issuance of a planned unit development permit." So, if I may. So since the two buildings are, are by right, that clause does not really, is not really germane. That clause is germane to the, the planned unit development plan as a whole that you're considering tonight. So I guess it would be, it would just affect the remain, the remaining buildings in that plan, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Kevin. So, and this is about building permits or certificate of occupancy. So did they not, did they need a building permit for what's already built?
They did. They got building permits for that.
But you're saying that's okay because it's by right?
Because it's by right, yes.
And so with any planned unit development, say you could build the first house by right, but then subsequent ones on the same lot require the PUD?
I mean, it would be kind of odd if somebody did that, but I suppose you could.
So, would you see a problem if we were to eliminate some of that based on the following in the whereas clause, just if some of it is not quite relevant or accurate? Some are opinions?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose it's, it's up to you on how, how you want to do it, because yeah, I agree, it is kind of confusing. Again, I was just trying to be as, as clear as possible that this is what the Plan Commission was basing their recommendation on. So if, if we all understand that, that that's, you know, what this section is about, then I think it's probably okay to leave it, but correcting the reference, so people can find that section if they need to. But really, it's up to you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I appreciate having that, you know, background in the memo, and like I said, from watching the meeting, I see where you were going there. I just have concerns that, you know, years later, someone could look back at that out of context, and it's not quite factual or relevant. And then I had just one more question for Kevin, if I may. If you could clarify, I heard something about a first and second round of notifications for the public. I was wondering if there's any information to give on that?
Well, there was, so I had provided the, the folks who were, who wanted to protest, I provided them the initial mailing list that we had sent out for, you know, for the Plan Commission hearing. And then I, I went back later when they said, "We want to protest," and I wanted to make sure that the list was, was totally accurate. So I went back, and I think there were a couple of extra properties that, that needed to be added to that list. So there are two lists, they're almost identical, but there were a couple of properties that were different.
Okay, but the original notifications to the residents were sent out in one wave, you're saying? Is that right?
Yes, like we do for all, all Plan Commission public hearings.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, I have a clarification. Does the number 16-7 need to be changed?
It does, yes. It should be, I don't know where that 16 came from, so I apologize. It should be 13-3, and then J7, and I'm not sure exactly how you want to do that. I usually just put like a dot. So maybe 13-3-j-j7.
Okay. So in the motion, the motion will have to reflect that change? Any other questions? We do have a motion, yeah. Made by Grace, seconded by Chandra. Grace?
I just have discussion, if I think we're at that point.
Yes. What, can we get the accurate motion on the floor? Would that change?
Well, I would actually propose that we just remove that whole numbers, 1 through 5, just remove in the whereas clause, based on the following and all the items. I'm curious of other council member input on that, but I just don't feel like it's necessary and completely factual as having in the actual ordinance.
You're amending your motion. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Discussion on that change first, then. James?
So Kevin, I, I heard you say earlier, when Grace first asked this question, whether that 1 through 5 was necessary or not. I heard you say, "It's not really." So, we could take this out with, with no impact?
I, I don't think that it would have any impact. Essentially, it's just giving a representation of why the Plan Commission made the recommendation that they made. But if you do as Grace suggested, which is sort of you just strike it where it says, "Based on the following," and then you strike all the numbers after that, I'd, I'd say that still gives you a very, you know, that gives you a more concise recommendation from the Plan Commission.
The Plan Commission's recommendation is on the record as well.
Correct, yes, yes.
So that's, that's how I understood Grace's amendment.
Okay. So to keep the language of the whereas, but to strike 1 through 5. Any discuss, further discussion? All those in favor of this change, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now we're back to the main motion discussion. Grace?
Thank you. Thank you to all, and should I have something to say? I'll try and have it organized. The last meeting, as chair, I didn't get to say a single thing of my own thoughts and asked one technical question the whole meeting, so I do have a few things to say here. Want to start out by thanking the public for a lot of input and participation. I'll reiterate that I watched the Plan Commission meetings, have listened to the concerns, and take that very seriously. I think that your public engagement and input process is very, very important. And with that, I do see that the Hope Village project has responded to a lot of the concerns made. Just to name a few that I had on my list from the past meeting, is that they've added aeration in the ponds to cut down on mosquitoes. They have the fence moved in their plans to be between the detention pond and Carver Park residents for protection of children that might be interested in the pond. Seems like they've worked on mitigating traffic impacts by requesting that none of their residents, visitors, or employees park on Carver Drive, having ambulances possibly turn off their lights, either with or without that, I think it's some conditions. And to have event parking that they've coordinated with the churches for any overflow. They've also talked about having shared amenities of the mobile clinic and the market. And I know that's not a full grocery store, and it's not committing the full needs by any means, but I think it shows a willingness to collaborate to open up those services with the surrounding neighborhoods. They have moved their developments slightly further north to add extra landscaping buffers on the south, and have committed to a neighborhood advisory board. So I think that the last issue that hasn't been compromised is the traffic on Carver Drive versus Federal Drive, is what I see as the last issue that hasn't been modified based on resident concerns, as opposed to a long list of others that have. I think that Federal Drive access, the important thing here is that it does add critical time for emergency responders. And with the traffic study that they voluntarily gotten, they expect to have 15 cars on the road per day. And from what I can see, that would pass by 17 houses. And I don't think that that is justification enough to add critical emergency time or to not approve this project. I understand it could be a perceived inconvenience still, but I also agree with, I think Jay has excellent points last meeting, that we can't hold Hope Village to a higher standard than others. I think that this will have less... to a higher standard than others. I think that this will have less impact than other things that are allowed by right, and that's not a threat, just the situation. I think this also prevents other developments from connecting to Carver Park Drive in the future, that nothing else will be built further north that could connect, because Hope Village isn't a thoroughfare. That will be a cap on Carver Drive. I, I understand some of the concerns here. I absolutely acknowledge the historical oppression and marginalization of people of color in our community. I understand feelings of mistrust from the neighborhood towards some of these institutions. As far as our decision here, I think that it is zoned residential, that is the plan. If that were an issue, that would be something to have looked into in the past, but this is what we have planned for residential development. I agree on some other broader issues outside of this, but also related, that we need to improve the process of public input and formal protest regarding zoning and permits, and that's something that I have brought up on our council goals and intend to keep bringing up so that we can have more opportunity for information and for protests for the public. I also agree with the recommendation that we continue to collaborate with Hope Village, the neighborhood, and the cities of Urbana and Champaign to provide some of that infrastructure that we need. So, I support this PUD. I have heard the concerns of the residents. I take them very seriously, and I think that all of the reasonable adjustments that aren't of major sacrifice to health of the people supported by the project have been met, and I think a lot of changes have been made in response to those concerns. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mary Alice?
Yeah, I'd like to start off with, with one major point, which is that regardless of who's speaking, either public input in our emails and so forth, I hear a resounding support for the concept of Hope Village. Even the immediate neighborhood who's had some concerns about the building of Hope Village are still in support of the concept of Hope Village. So, I think if you look at the impact on the individuals who would be living there, the impact of the city, I think that there is definitely support for that. I, I understand some of the frustration of the neighborhood in terms of going through all of this process, trying to understand our zoning ordinance, trying to figure out how to do the protest and so forth, and I, I really would like the staff to work to make this a little bit of an easier process for people. Specifically, giving people actual addresses would be a great start if you're going to do a protest letter, because it's very challenging sometimes to figure out who those people are. So, I commend the neighborhood for actually going through that process, coming multiple times to come and speak with us about their concerns. I would like to say that if this vote goes forward, that all of the effort that the neighborhood has done is not for naught, meaning you have, there are some things here that you have accomplished. You have accomplished Amarin and the City of Champaign taking a hard look at the infrastructure in that neighborhood and making some commitments. That's a big accomplishment. You have actually impacted where and how that development is going to be done. You didn't, we have not been able to resolve the issue of Carver Drive. I wish that we would have been able to do that. There were several ideas in terms of how to do that. The numbers that I have heard, and somebody, please correct me if I am wrong, but I had heard that it would add six minutes for rescue for fire and ambulance if they used Federal Drive, and six minutes is actually quite a bit of time in order to get the necessary medical services that somebody would need. And I think that, that is a big component. We are talking about a medically fragile group of people who are going to be in need of medical services, and we have to take that into consideration. I, I, I just want to say to the neighbors, because I, I have a feeling that you're going to be disappointed at the end of this meeting. I could be wrong. I could be completely wrong. But I, I will say that we have heard your concerns, and we have done our best to try and work with the people who are doing this development to alleviate as many of those concerns as possible. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments? Chris?
Thank you. It is hoped that there will be jobs building Hope Village for local African-American men. It is hoped that the Carver Park residents will be able to utilize the Hope Village Community Center for events, meetings, ceremonies, and parties. It is hoped that there will be space for community gardening on the grounds of Hope Village, where a community garden for lessons in gardening, creating a healthy food access point, and possibly a profitable business that would be a great asset for both Hope Village and the Carver Park neighborhood. It is hoped that there will be the establishment of a neighborhood council where the Carver Park residents, the U of I, Carl Hospital, Champaign County healthcare consumers, and the residents of Hope Village can have regular meetings to continue to design a better quality of life for everyone. It is hoped that these 30 homeless people have been sent to protect, preserve, and enhance the Carver Park neighborhood. Thanks for letting me speak.
Anyone else wish to speak? Just a reminder, this takes five votes by the alderman currently holding office, and the mayor does not vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
That motion passes.
Next, a move on behalf of Committee of the Whole for approval, ordinance number 2023-12-051, an ordinance approving a preliminary slash final subdivision plot, Hope Village subdivision planned case 2479-S-23.
And a reminder, this vote requires a simple majority, or four votes, to pass. Is there a second?
One second.
By Grace, seconded by Jaya. Questions for staff? Question? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Ms. Colacetti? Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
That motion passes. Thank you, Grace. There are no reports from special committees, reports of officers. There are none. There's no new business, and this meeting stands adjourned, and will be followed immediately by the Committee of the Whole meeting. And that'll be chaired by James Quisenberry.
Can we, can we take a five-minute break?
We can.
Before we start, thank you.
We'll take a five-minute break.